Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Before we begin, we'll have a councilman by, or a prayer by Councilman Rick Mahalovich, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us be thankful for the Jefferson City community. Together, as a city, county, and state, we have demonstrated our community is stronger together. This is best demonstrated by our Slute to America Celebration, but also exists every day by the many volunteers that serve on our committees and commissions, and everyday citizens helping others. As we consider these things, we have to be thankful for, in Jefferson City, let us further extend our prayers for those impacted by the recent hurricanes and flooding. Therefore, let us pray for continued guidance in our deliberations and proudly proclaim that we are stronger together in our efforts to improve the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. In his name, we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice on all.
Welcome to the Monday, October 15th, 2018, City Council meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Present.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, I'll ask for an adoption of the agenda with one amendment to add item four D, a Buy Missouri proclamation. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We'll start with the Project Homeless Proclamation, Project Homeless Connect Day. And we do have some guests here in the audience. If you all would like to come forward to the podium, we welcome you here this evening. And we also have a report by Mrs. Abbott about the Project Homeless Connect. If you could either come forward or from your seat, whatever you prefer, and welcome. We're glad to have you all here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Project Homeless Connect is in its fourth year of completing this one-day, one-stop event, and it has several, several organizations that are collaborating together. Essentially homelessness is an issue across the nation. Over two million individuals are at risk or is homeless. And, you know, across and within rural Missouri, there is several, couple thousand that are also homeless as well, and it affects individuals right here at home. And I have Edwin Cooper, who is one of the coordinators for Project Homeless Connect, and Amy Rogers, as well, that has participated in coordinating and getting, making this event possible for this Friday.
Welcome. We're glad to have you all here and looking forward to the event. And I will not be at the event. I'll be out of town, but Councilman Hussey will be bringing a welcome to the event, and it's always something that is great for the city. And would you two like to add anything more about the event before I read the proclamation?
Yes. We thank for the, thanks everyone for the city's support. We have a lot of faith communities and a lot of organizations, a lot of the health organization, the mental health organizations, and a lot of great coal county health departments. So it's a great event. So it's a national model, and like I said, we initially got started with the support of the city. And like I said, this is our fourth year, and we appreciate all the community's support. We couldn't do it without of the great volunteers, and we generally have about 170, 180 volunteers. And historically, at the, on the fourth event, at least the last three events, we have an average of about 150, what we call them guests. Project Homeless Connect is like, is more than a health fair. Everything services is free, but each guest is assigned a tour guide. So that's why we need the volunteers and the community's support. So thank the city and the community.
Thank you. We appreciate you both being here, and the city is proud to be a partner with this. I know it helps a lot of people every year, and we're glad to do this. So I'll read the proclamation, and then you can tell us if you're still looking for volunteers and how they can get involved. So I'll re, I'll share this with you. It says, "Whereas more than two million Americans across our country experience homelessness each year, and whereas the point-in-time count on January 25th, 2017 documented 1,243 homeless individuals in rural Missouri. And whereas the City of Jefferson point-in-time count on January 25th documented 50 homeless and unsheltered individuals in Coal County. And whereas the City of Jefferson Project Homeless Connect aims to reduce barriers and provide access to housing and other services to those experiencing chronic homelessness in our city, including children, families, disabled individuals, and veterans. And whereas the homelessness task force comprised of members in the faith community, service agencies, and concerned citizens desires to partner with city government and local officials. And whereas elected government officials, we are accountable to our community for the well-being of all its citizens, and we recognize that no one organization or one level of government can remedy homelessness alone. And whereas we strive to work with local, state, federal, and faith-based partners to identify and develop innovative strategies to end homelessness. Therefore, I, Carrie Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim October 19th as Project Homeless Connect Day. Mayor, community appreciate the value of all of our citizens and strive to end homelessness." So we are happy to present this to you, and tell us how citizens can get involved.
We do have a Facebook page, and you can go there. There's a link, several different links, several different posts that have a link for volunteers. And then we also have a webpage that is JCProjectHomelessConnect.Weebly.com. And you can go there and sign up to register to volunteer as well. We also would appreciate if you just showed up for an hour or so, if you, if any of you on our board would like to, that would be great. So any or all, and you can go for an hour, you can go for the whole day, so.
Great. Well, we'll see you this Friday. And what time does that start again? What are the hours?
We like the volunteers to show up at eight-thirty. The project does not actually kick off until nine o'clock. Till two? Yes.
And we have the, what we call the pep rally started at eight, I believe. That's when you have, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Great. Sounds like fun. Well, I'll come around and present the proclamation along with Councilman Hussey. He'll be bringing the welcome on Friday. And then if the council would like to get behind me here, and we'll take a picture for you to share. Thank you. All right. Item four B, at this time, we would like to recognize Roxy Van Poel, Coordinator for the Tunnels to Towers 5K Event, and present the traveling trophy to the Jefferson City Fire Department. So welcome, Chief Schofield and Roxy Van Poel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We'd also like to ask the firefighters to join us up here at the podium.
Thank you. We're glad to have you with us.
As they're coming up, there's a few pictures that you'll see over the big screen. But as you may know, Roxy came here two years ago and presented the traveling trophy to the City of Jefferson, to the Jefferson City Fire Department, for their Fastest Firehouse Award. So last year, we, we lost that, that challenge, and it went to South Callaway Fire Protection District. But this year, these three guys were able to reclaim the trophy, and they bring it back here to Jeff City. So I'll turn it over to Roxy and let her talk a little bit more about that.
For those of you who aren't familiar with the Steven Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation, it was started in New York City after 9/11. It is a 9/11 memorial event, and it honors our first responders, those that gave their lives on 9/11, as well as those that do serve and protect us every day as we go about our daily business. So we were really happy to bring an event to Jefferson City three years ago. We've had it all the last three years. Mayor Turgeon always comes and welcomes our participants. This year, we were just shy of 200 participants with 191. So we're growing, and we're very excited about that. And we're very excited to be able to award the Fastest Firehouse Trophy back to Jefferson City this year.
Well, thank you. This is such an honor and proud of our firefighters in bringing this trophy back. So congratulations, and thank you for supporting such a worthy cause. That means a lot.
And I do want to mention the firefighters, in case you're not familiar with them, are Pete Stoops. Yes, Ryan Back and Mike Bainridge.
Great. Well, we're very proud of our firefighters, especially all of you for working so hard, and thank you for doing this. And why don't we come forward with the trophy and get a picture? We'll have council come behind us, and Ryan will take a picture of all of us again. Thank you again. We're so very proud of you all. Item C, we have Resolution 2018-17.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson recognizing Rick Hurst as the 2000, 2018 outstanding employee.
And we'll welcome Mr. Kroll.
And I will have Mr. Rick Hurst come forward. Read through a little bit of the nomination. The city has a longstanding tradition of honoring employees who provide outstanding service. Each year, an employee is nominated by their peers to be considered for the Outstanding Service Award. A committee of past recipients reviews each nomination and selects a deserving employee to be honored as the Outstanding Service Award recipient. This year, the committee chose Rick Hurst to receive the 2018 Outstanding Service Award. Rick began his career in the Public Works Department in 1985. In 2004, Rick obtained his license as a registered land surveyor. In addition to his duties in the engineering division, Rick often serves a wider customer base. He helps Parks and Recreation and Forestry Department determine property boundaries, tree ownership, and surveys for Greenway Trail construction. He assists the sewer division in surveying for property boundaries and construction of new and replacement sewers. And he is also called during all hours of the night to assist with information gathering for the police department for their investigations. Rick is very conscientious, orderly, precise, and accurate. He has an outstanding positive attitude of getting the job done in a manner of pride and correctness. One nomination said, "I am highly recommending Rick as our next Outstanding Service Award recipient because of his trustworthiness." Rick's trust is very strong, and he holds his religious values close as it is reflected in his faith, family, and work ethic. I am proud to announce Rick Hurst as the City of Jefferson 2018 Outstanding Service Award recipient. And you have somebody here with you? Want to introduce?
Yes, that's my lovely wife, Jeff City's own Sheila. She's, she's what makes me what I am today, so.
Oh. Thank you.
Great. Congratulations, and did you want to get a picture?
Yes, I would love to get a picture, and we are so very proud of all of the, what you do for the city, too. That means a lot, and all of the nominations really showed all of your achievements, and we appreciate your wonderful service to our community. So we'd love to get a picture, and I'd like to present you a city coin, and we're also glad to have your wife here today. So if council would come on up, we'll get a picture.
Great.
Oh, and you know what? I forgot to actually get a motion and vote on that. So why don't we do a motion to approve 2018-17? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
All right. It's official. He is officially our Outstanding Service Award employee. So thank you again to Rick Hurst. Item D, we have a proclamation for Buy Missouri. So I will share this with you. "Whereas the Office of the Lieutenant Governor has created a national Buy Missouri Economic Development Initiative to actively promote to other states and the world the products that are grown, manufactured, processed, and/or made in Missouri. And whereas approved products and businesses are listed on the Business Directory page of BuyMissouri.net and features Missouri business spotlights, and the Buy Missouri Campaign is organizing a variety of activities such as community events, entertainment attractions, and trade shows to promote tourism, business, and economic development, which will showcase Missouri-made products and businesses. And whereas Governor Mike Parson and Lieutenant Governor Mike Kehoe have been instrumental in the Buy Missouri program, and we look forward to collaborating for the continued growth of Missouri businesses. And whereas the capital city encourages citizens to buy local items made in Missouri. Therefore, I, Carrie Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, hereby proclaim October 13th through 20th as Buy Missouri Week in the City of Jefferson, and encourage everyone to support Missouri businesses and families and buy local." So we want to take this moment to encourage everyone to buy local and consider that in their decision-making, and how important it is when we buy Missouri-made products and support those Missouri companies. So we're glad that the Lieutenant Governor Mike Kehoe has proclaimed it as Buy Missouri Week, and he has another engagement this evening and was not able to join us, but was very glad to hear that our city is doing this proclamation here locally in the capital city. So why don't we get one last picture, and we'll get a picture with our proclamation, and we will post and share this out. And are there any other comments on Buy Missouri? Okay, we'll do one more picture here. Item five, public hearings. We have item 2018-55.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a preliminary PUD plan for property addressed as 3410 Sherman's Hollow.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First to orient you to the location of this request, up on the screen is a location map with the property highlighted. The property consists of just under one acre of land located on the corner of Wildwood and Sherman's Hollow, about one-quarter of a mile north of West Edgewood Drive. The property is zoned a PUD, a Planned Unit Development zoning district. Just to the north of the property is an RA2, a multifamily residential district. This bill would approve a preliminary PUD development plan for the property. The development plan consists of two residential duplexes, which would be constructed on the property as shown on the screen. The design of the duplexes would consist of brick on the front of the buildings, siding on the sides. The property just to the, to the west of this is a townhouse-style development, and so the developer, property owner, really looked toward the structures in that, in that development when designing this one, so that they, they look similar. This item was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of September 13th. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on Bill 2018-55? Welcome, and if you could just give us your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Patrick Kramer, Central Missouri Professional Services, 2500 East McCarty Street. I'm here representing Steve Leitner of Marketing Specialists, Specialists Incorporated. He's with me here tonight in, in the audience. As mentioned, the proposed plan would construct two single-story duplexes on the site. We believe the proposed duplexes would fit into the neighborhood very well. The building elevations will be very similar to the townhouses just west of the site and with similar finishes, as Eric mentioned. The duplexes will be rental property, and in addition to Mr. Leitner's apartment development just north of the site. If you refer to the handout that I've given you, the site layout and grading plan, which is also up on the screen, the site will be graded such that the stormwater flow from the rear of the units will, will, will flow to the existing city curb inlets along Sherman's Hollow Road. Also part of the plan, the sanitary sewer extension will be constructed to allow access to both buildings, and sidewalks will also be constructed along Sherman's Hollow per the city requirements. We believe that we have a good plan in place for this development with city staff support, and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Roger Wise, 932 Nassau Place, W I S is my last name. I'm the Secretary of the West Point Homeowners Association. I'm also the past president. Unfortunately, I'm here this evening to object to this. We do not have any opposition to rental property. We do have an opposition to putting rental property in with residential homeowners, and this would do that. We also are a little concerned about the traffic pattern. There's a lot of traffic on Wildwood. How would this impact that traffic also with people living there? But we do have a, I represent 34 homeowners. The other homeowners also are objecting to this in the West Point Development Estates there. We just don't like rental property integrated in with residential property, this private property, and that would do this. So we're not opposed to rental property. We are opposed to integrating it in with residential homeowner's private property. With me also is the President of our association, John Bailey. If John wants to speak, he may also. But we would urge you to not approve this for rental property. It's kind of a shame that they didn't decide to make, build two units to match what's there and sell them. It would have been more appropriate to have had that than to have had rental property integrated with residential property. So we are opposed, and we urge you to vote against this being rental property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Hussey?
One, your homeowners' association that you have, does that restrict what a current property owner could do with their property within there?
Yes, we have, we have covenants. They were not developed by us, they were developed by the developers.
So for example, one of these current properties that's owned, could that property owner rent that particular piece of property?
Cannot.
Councilman Graham?
And Councilman Hussey, I had that same conversation, and I was told that they could not. So with that, along with other concerns that Mr. Wise has brought out, I will be voting no for this PUD tonight, so.
I can want to assure you, we're not opposed to rental property, it's just the fact of putting it in with current private homeowners.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Just to clarify, though, this particular piece of property, is that covered or not covered by your HOA docs?
No, it is not. It is private, separate lots.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Bill 2018-55? Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Steve Leitner, 710 Wildwood Drive with Jefferson West Apartments. And we've tried very hard to meet what we thought would be most appropriate to build on this lot. This lot has been sitting vacant. It's a kind of an eyesore right now. There are a lot of downed trees, it's a fire hazard, there are kids that are in there playing and setting little fires. We think this is the best use for this particular lot, and we've tried everywhere we can to match it to the neighborhood. I, I do have a little objection to people not wanting to be around rental property, because we probably, when we do our criteria, we check people out before they rent. We, we do both credit and criminal checks. I suspect that there, we vet them, we check with their prior landlords. We do more checks on them than probably realtors do when they, when they actually will sell a property. So I, I don't, and now, not all landlords do that, but we do. And I think this, I think if you look at our property just, just north of these lots, Jefferson West Apartments, we try very hard to make it a very nice community, a nice area, and we have good people that live there. And these are the people that provide services to the, to the town, and it's important that we incorporate everyone into the neighborhood. So any questions?
Any questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
Were you aware that there are people that might oppose this development? And what effort did you make to reach out to them and meet with them?
We did have a, we did invite them to our office, and we sat down and talked about some of the concerns that they had. We tried to address what they had. As far as traffic control, we've got all those state buildings, and I don't know how many employees are there, but, you know, having two duplexes would not significantly add to the traffic problem. We did look at it, though, and say, by putting, I don't know if you noticed, but we put in two-car garages. These are only two-bedroom apartments, but we put in two-car garages to try to keep the cars off the street. Because we could see if someone makes a quick turn, that that would not be the most appropriate place to have a car parked on the side of the road. There is no restrictions to park along, along Sherman's Hollow, but we thought, if we can get our people off the street, then that would make it a much better situation for, for the people that, that, that travel there on a daily basis. Any other questions?
Other questions? And I'm not sure if you've had a chance to talk with the Neighborhood Association, I'm not sure exactly what some of their covenants are that they have within their properties or their things that you could incorporate into some of these properties if this were to pass.
The, the covenants did not apply to this particular lot. In fact, this lot could have been a commercial establishment. You could put in anything you want, a doctor's office, you could put in a tattoo parlor. There's nothing, no restrictions on that, on the use of that lot at this time.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on Bill 201855? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion, and we will take up the bill.
Madam Mayor, may I please ask staff a question?
Yes.
As relates to, I know we had talked, you talked about the stormwater runoff, and it's going to dump off into Sherman Hollow's Road, and that's a drain. Could you talk a little bit more about the stormwater runoff for me, please, Mr. Baron?
Madam, do you want to do that?
And is that equipped enough to handle what it is?
Yeah, basically, I understand there's some concerns from the neighboring condominium association there, and the, basically, the lot's going to be regraded, direct all the stormwater down to the street, so it'll be collected in the inlets and moved on through that way. I understand right now, one of the adjacent homeowners has current issues, and our stormwater engineer had been out and visited with them and gave them some recommendations on how to improve their situation as well.
Were those recommendations something that the homeowner needs to pay for, or something that we can do?
Regardless of what happens here, but this development will be directed toward the street, the water towards the street.
And is that drain equipped now to handle what's going there now?
Yes, our staff looked at that.
All right, we'll have some council deliberation. Any discussion of council questions? Councilman Fitzwater.
Just to follow to that, how is the draining now just being a lot?
Basically, it's sheet flowing off there. You can kind of see the contours on the, on the, on the screen there, but, so it's going to be regraded so that it flows back to the street. Right now, it just overland flows. And that's, that's why the, I believe the homeowner had some issues already, the way it is today.
Councilman Hensley.
Thank you. Do you think that the stormwater would flow any differently if there were townhouses there rather than what's been proposed?
No, they would be built in much the same manner.
Thank you.
Just be the ownership, I guess.
Any other council deliberation or questions, discussion? Then are we ready to take up 201855? Okay, roll call, please.
Graham?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
No.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
No.
Wiseman?
No.
Fitzwater?
No.
Six no, four yes, so the motion fails. Or the bill fails, I'm sorry. Okay. So we appreciate everyone here this evening to speak on that bill. 201861.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri endorsing the reconfiguration of Jeff Tran routes.
Mr. Marash and Mr. Maymert.
Mark Maymert's here with our Transit Division as well. And just a quick background, so since about last year, we've been involved in a transit study to kind of do an overall study of our transit system. That study recommended some changes to the routes. Since then, we've, we've installed some new counters, electronic counters, and some locating systems, things of that nature. So that recommendation here is different than what was originally proposed by the consultant. But just run through this real quickly here, and we had an extensive public outreach program that Mark headed up, and, and we had good attendance on that and received several comments. And then we went through the Public Works and Planning Committee last, this last time as well, and talked about those and gave out those comments. But basically, I would consider the, you know, the route change is very minor, and I can show you real quickly. The changes are highlighted on these maps, and you all have a copy of our presentation at your, at your desk. So if you have a question as we go through, just please stop us and ask. But basically, we're modifying the six fixed buses, and, but we're not operating the hours or days. Those remain unchanged. So it's basically just tweaks to the routes themselves. And because we're not modifying the hours or how many days we operate, so it's really a net zero cost to this. It's just tweaking the routes that are in existence. So one of the goals was to provide service to new destinations that have been recently developed. And Capital City High School is obviously under construction now, and then, of course, SSM Hospital already operating, but they're right in the same location, so trying to get access to the bus there. Community Health Center, it's been moved over off of Christie Drive, and so this, this change does accommodate that. Cole County Health Department took their old facility, but it retains that. And just also, just looking at other social service needs and agencies that are on, in the, in the city, but also shopping, banking, doctor's offices, all those things that, that folks that need to get to, that may not have a car, and may not be able to drive for whatever reason, allowing them some access to those facilities. But basically, add and maintain the route segments that have ridership on them currently. And again, our electronic passenger counters really helped us look at that issue. And we'll take, then the segments we removed had very low ridership, one, maybe zero in some cases, and we point that out in these next few slides. And then, once, once these are passed, we hope they're passed tonight, we would go back and look for improved pedestrian accommodations, such as more shelters, or if we maybe moved a, moved a route a little bit, make sure the sidewalks are in good repair, things of that nature. So, going down through here, Missouri Boulevard Route, and just real quickly, I can run through these, there's six of them, but a little, maybe a little hard to see here, but if the, if the line has thickened and has the arrows, that's where we run current, or have already run. So for example, this route runs right here now. It won't in the future. The new route will take a diversion up here and come around off St. Mary's Boulevard. So that's really the change here in this route, and, but the, but this segment is also picked up by a different bus in the future. And so the next slide just kind of shows you some statistics about the route, the proposed route, how many riders we have on it. This is our busiest route, Missouri Boulevard, so it had eighty-one thousand, a little over eighty-one thousand rides last year. And also, another thing about the, the changes are, we're going to, we still refer to them probably as Missouri Boulevard, but they'll also have a color designation, just trying to make it simplify for people. They say, oh, which bus do I need to be on? Get on the orange route bus, instead of, you know, worrying about all the different street names, which may not be totally descriptive. But you can see the current destinations. None of those are changing. Tried to point out in these slides, the added destinations, or if we removed one, we pointed that out, and kind of tried to give some advantages, disadvantages. So you can kind of see them there for yourself. I won't go through them in detail. But if you have a question, just feel free to ask us. Another highly utilized route is the Capitol Mall Route. This one's changed, again, the St. Mary's, new high schools in this area. Before, this was an on-demand route on this, on this, or an on-demand leg of this route. So if you were sitting at a bus stop at the hospital, you'd have to call into dispatch, and they would help you do this. And then we would deviate this route out to there. That caused, you know, some delay in this route occasionally, and we did run out there every day multiple times usually. It's picked up over time. So one of the big changes is over here. Instead of Run Back Country Club, this full route, we kind of deviate out a little bit and back around, and there's some multifamily houses out here that we know people are walking from to get a ride on the bus. So trying to get a little close to the ridership there. I think that's about the changes on this route. Again, stop me if I'm going too fast. But again, you know, you can see the comparison to the Missouri Boulevard Route, again, over eighty, eighty thousand rides. This is back closer to thirty. But current destination's still there. Kind of point out some connections and transfer to other routes. Added destination, so again, kind of those facilities, pathways would be on this route. Then get, get closer out to Old Lowman and Leander Lane to pick up more people. Destination, this one's been reassigned, so we tried to point out if it, it maybe was on a route, but now it's going to be picked up by a different one. We went ahead and called it reassigned in the slides. The next one, Southwest Route are now the new blue route. So, so the fat lines where there's no arrows, those are where the bus used to run, and now, and they're not going to run there any longer, but they will be reassigned in many cases. But again, so the new portion of this route where it used to, the bus used to turn here, it's going to go out, go on out, basically Route C, out towards V, and then it will pick up, on a full-time basis, the, the hospital and the new high school will be located here. And the time being, it'll, it'll go down Mission Drive and head out to 179 and back around to Edgewood and back. Once the new road is constructed, which is this line, it'll no longer do that because you don't obviously pick up many people out on the highway. So we will go past the high school down on Creek Trail and come back around. It does eliminate this little piece, but that is picked up by our Capitol Mall Route. So. Again, just trying to tweak these routes, eliminating this section. This will not be added back in by a new route, but we think in the data showed, on the next page, we had zero ridership in our counting period on that anyway. So eliminate, eliminating that would obviously not affect any riders or anybody that had been riding recently. And this one will be picked up by a different route now. Again, the main destinations added were the multifamily units near Rolling Hills Road, and then the St. Mary's Hospital, Capital City High School, and Salvation Army thrift store. Going through this pretty quick. If anybody has any questions, please do so. Business 50, again, this is slightly modified. We used to have an on-demand route over here on St. Louis Road, but we had very few rides on that. It did cause us some delays of being on time back to the transfer station. So we propose just to eliminate that altogether and have some certainty on the timeliness of the bus. Downhill, you can walk down to McCarty Street and catch the bus, and we'll be looking if there are specific needs, you know, more, maybe a sidewalk connection or something like that where you could walk, walk directly to the bus. Again, Business 50, not much, not a lot of change there except for this. We had one ride per month on that on-demand system, but six stops along there. High Street East, green, the new green route, taken out a piece that went out to the East Gerbs area, that's that shopping mall area. That's picked up by a different bus now, but the reason this had to be done, we cut a few segments out, and the southern one over here that goes in front of Helius on Stadium, that had to come off, but the new community health center is located right here, so this is a new add, add to this area. So we go down, pick up on that side of the road, drop off, come back around, and then head back up and, and then capture this portion of Southwest Boulevard. We did, you know, and in some instances where we had a ride or two a week, this was one of them. Somebody got on the bus kind of mid-block here, near Helius. I think there's some apartments there, but there is a sidewalk, just a short, flat, more or less flat walk back to where we turn at Stadium there by Helius. So try to accommodate people the best we could with a short walk if possible. And we, we had a lot of destinations on this route here. I won't go through them all in detail, but, but I think it'll be a good thing. One of the things, you'd be surprised, a lot of people traveled on the bus to Sonic, so that's going to be a little bit longer walk for those folks, so. The High Street West Route, again, this is the main segment along Main Street we'll be removing. However, we were able to add quite a segment along Industrial. There's several businesses right here along Industrial. What was happening, people were wanting to access those businesses. They'd get, have to get off on Main Street, and they'd end up walking, say, through the school lot or St. Joe lot to get down there, and there's, of course, school there as well. But, and so trying to accommodate those riders, we also would get complaints about people walking through those other properties to, to access someplace else. So this would eliminate that issue. But fairly minor change on this one, kind of add a little bit here to go through this little development here, and there's a facility. Yeah, Metro Drive, yeah. Pathways is there. So again, what, what has been added, added destinations, and, and you can see, you can see the, the count on the stops that were removed right here. Pretty, pretty minor. And that's the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I know you said you went through it quickly, but actually, it's been at Public Works and Planning and several other meetings and input, so we feel, I'm sure council and others have seen it, so we appreciate the overview here and as well as the other meetings and the input that went into this. Are there any questions of council before we open the public hearing portion? Okay, while I have you at the podium, I'll say that the Ride the Bus Day seemed to be a success last week as well. Enjoyed that. Did you have any report on that?
Around fifteen hundred riders, which is about double our normal day. So we consider a very successful adventure. Kind of gives us a little bit of a boost in profile, and it's one of the ways that we can boost the system.
Great. Well, hopefully, you were able to introduce that to others in the community. I know I met some people that brought their grandchildren along that were on some of the routes that I was on, that they thought that would be fun to bring the kids to see what it was like. And I know, I think, the entire front office here from City Hall went. I even brought my mom and my aunt from, visiting from Greece to really get an experience for Ride the Bus Day. So we enjoyed, enjoyed being on the bus that day, so.
Thank you.
All right. Well, at this time, we will open the public hearing portion for item B. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on Bill 201861? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and take up Bill 201861. Is there any council discussion or deliberation? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item six, appointments by the mayor. We have three this evening for Board of Adjustment, Historic Preservation, and Convention and Visitors Bureau. And is there any council questions on that slate of appointees? Is there a motion to approve?
Move acceptance.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you to our volunteers that serve on our boards and commissions. Item B, we have a liaison appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. Councilman Hussey has some scheduling conflicts. We appreciate all the time you've spent on the Parks and Rec Commission, so at this time, we'll ask for a motion to turn that seat over to Councilman Kimna.
So moved.
That was pretty quick there, Councilman Hussey. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and thank you, Councilman Kimna. Item seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. We don't have any this evening. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Of course, you can check out our committee meetings at JeffersonCityMo.gov. And I'll start with my announcements. We had, and I'm sure Carolyn will talk about it as well, but we had a nice ceremony for the new Lincoln University president, and that was a wonderful time. They had several festivities going on along with Lincoln Homecoming, and was proud to be part of that ceremony in welcoming our new Lincoln University President, Dr. Gerald Jones Wolfok. And also, this week on Friday, it's one of my favorite weeks of the year, it's Buckle Up Phone Down Week, and this Friday is Buckle Up Phone Down Day. Good, good job, Carlos and Laura. Okay, everybody? So buckle up, phone down, everyone, all right? So we want to remember to do that every day of the year, but especially, MoDOT has a special week and a special day, so encourage everyone, no matter where you work, and your families and friends, to encourage everyone to especially buckle up, phone down all the time. So I'll turn over to council. Any council announcements? Councilman Hussey?
I'll just make one for my Rotary Club. It's our annual spaghetti dinner this Friday night, 4:30 to 7:00. I think Frank left. He's in the club with me. 4:30 to 7:00 at Grace Episcopal Church. I cook the spaghetti, so.
Uh-oh.
Councilman Hensley, that's good. That's not bad. So come on out, 4:30 to 7:00, $10 for adults, $5 for kids, under six, eat free. I mean, you can bring two of your children, John, to.
Despite the warning that it may not keep us away.
So come on out Friday evening, supports our local efforts in the community. So I'm looking to see all of you there.
Sounds good. Are you cooking?
I'm cooking. I make it all day.
Okay. Actually, you did cook it last year, and it was good.
I've cooked it for 12 years now, so. Start about 1:00, let it simmer for the day. There's a science to this, all right?
Okay. Well, you could bring a sample sometime, but we'll, we'll see you Friday night. Any other announcements of council? And then, item B, we have Mr. Sanders, or actually, Mrs., or Eric Baron will give us an announcement for Campo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization is undertaking a
The Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization is undertaking its drafting of a new 25-year transportation plan. As part of the public involvement component of the drafting of that plan, a number of open house meetings are being held. Unfortunately, one of them was actually held in Jeff City last Wednesday. We held an open house here to give some of the preliminary information on that plan. We do have another open house that will be taking place tomorrow night in Holt Summit at the Holt Summit City Hall from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And of course, the reason it's outside Jefferson City is because the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization encompasses the entire metro region, which includes several of the outlined communities. So tomorrow, 4:00 to 7:00, it's Holt Summit City Hall.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Okay. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative update, Ms. Wanjaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council as a whole. As you mentioned, homecoming was a great success. We had fun all week long despite being in class. The homecoming parade was also a phenomenal event, though like towards the end of the parade, it started raining, and I mean pouring really heavy, but that did not stop the Blue Tiger family from enjoying the parade. Thank you to all council members who joined us at the inauguration on Friday morning and also at the inaugural ball at the same night. And it was great to have all the alumni back in Jefferson City. It is always beneficial for the university, but also for the city of Jefferson, because, you know, this is like home. And so they come out and they show up in big numbers. And so, yeah, oh, and also on Saturday, the Jefferson City chapter of the NAACP had their annual dinner this past Saturday. And thank you to Councilman Hensley for showing up despite it was really cold on Saturday. I really feel, I was like, wow. Thank you for coming out. It was great.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have to say, beautiful rendition of the Star Spangled Banner performed by our representative here.
Wow.
Very nice.
Glad to hear that. Congratulations for that. And didn't realize that you also were a singer, so I would love to hear that sometime. So appreciate that. And also thank you, Councilman Hensley, for being there and bringing a city welcome.
It was my pleasure. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Item 10 is presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. We don't have anyone signed up this evening, but I know we do have some members that are here from the Parks and Recreation Commission. They're here to speak on Resolution 201819, which is cosponsored by Councilman Graham Hussey and Ward and Schreiber. I'm sorry, sponsored by Schreiber with those others as cosponsors. So I'm wondering if, if council would not object to having them come up at this time to give the presentation along with the staff presentation by Mr. Todd Spalding and then taking up that resolution? Or would we need to have a motion if we wanted to do that?
You need to amend the agenda to do that.
So we could do it that way? Would council like to amend the agenda to take that up immediately following item 10?
I believe we said across the hall that we will wait.
Okay.
So I think that's the reason why you're not getting a second to that.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
I think it was discussed across the hall that we were waiting.
And we did discuss it across the hall, so I just wanted to make sure everybody still felt the same about it. Okay, then. So since they haven't signed up, I assume what we'll do is when we take up the resolution at that time at the end of the meeting, that we could ask council if they would like to take up, we'll have Mr. Spalding come up and then ask for some public comment at that time. Okay. Item 11, consent agendas, their motion to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduced, 201863.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with AJ Long Care LLC for cemetery maintenance of Longview Cemetery, Old City Cemetery, and Woodland Cemetery.
Mrs. Abbott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a contract for cemetery maintenance at Longview Cemetery, Old City Cemetery, and Woodland Cemetery, which expires in November, November 30th of 2018. Our purchasing division solicited bids that, and that went out to approximately 20 companies, plus there was an advertisement in the News Tribune. One bid was received. The sole bidder does have experience with the cemetery care, and therefore we recommend approving the bid. It is a one-year contract with a two-year renewal for a total of $99,300. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. 201864.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Midstate Pipeline Maintenance LLC in the amount of $282,013 for the Jefferson City Chickadee and Mesa Stormwater Projects Project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, construction contract with Midstate Pipeline. They've worked for the city in the past, and we think they would do adequate job at this job as well. Contracts for $282,013, and that is funded through the stormwater supplemental appropriation the council did last year. The Chickadee pipe is a crossroad pipe out in the neighborhood, but it's rusted out, collapsed, and doesn't really carry the design storm any, any longer. And then a Mesa, another large culvert that's been rusted out. We've repaired it several times and this would replace that as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Item 13, bills pending. We've already taken up item A. Item B, 201856.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $163,886 agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Metropolitan Transportation Planning Services for the period of November 1, 2018 to October 31, 2019, reflecting consolidated planning grant, CPG funds, as approved in the FY 2019 Unified Planning Work Program.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the annual funding agreement with Modot that funds the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. Is the 16th such agreement, so they've been, been around for 16 years now. And the money is an 80/20 match with the federal government giving basically 80%, and 20% local match. Three-quarters of that being brought forward by the city and the remaining quarter of that 20% being brought forward by Cole County. The dollar amounts are located within the revised bill summary. There is a few inaccurate amounts in the first bill summary, but the revised summary has all the accurate numbers. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberations? Roll call, please.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Bill passes, 201857.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 21, nuisances, Article 2, weeds code of the City of Jefferson.
Mr. Marash? Or I'm sorry, Mrs. Abbott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a staff-initiated proposal to change the nuisance code, which provides a vague definition. And by that, I'm going to go ahead and turn over to my staff, Dave Helmick, to provide a presentation on the proposed changes.
Thank you. What we hope to do with the amended article is clearly define both the violations, the definitions of weeds, and also what is allowed and not allowed. So noxious weeds under the city ordinance would contain these here. These are based off what the Department of Natural Resources for the state of Missouri considers noxious weeds. Nuisance weeds would be defined as poison ivy, poison sumac, poison oak. It would allow for a definition of butterfly gardens. Under the current code, it doesn't specify whether or not you can have natural vegetation or butterfly gardens, things like that. Agricultural and undeveloped lots. Currently under the code, agricultural lots are allowed to be in the city limits with a 15-foot buffer. What we've done is also added undeveloped lots to that. An undeveloped lot is a lot that hasn't been graded, hasn't been developed. Steep slopes with vegetation. These would be slopes greater than a 20-degree angle mainly around drainage ditches and in new housing developments. And then also your cultivated plants, your native and ornamental vegetation gardens, which are currently allowed but are further defined under the new. Violations, the violations remain the same as they are currently. Noxious weeds, nuisance weeds, failure to maintain turf weeds and grass over 12 inches tall, still all remain violations and would be enforced the same ways that it currently is. Things like vegetation interfering with sidewalks, streets, line of sight for vehicles would still remain violations as well as tall turf grass in residential yards. We came up with these recommendations based off the Missouri Department of Conservation, U.S. Department of Agriculture, Missouri Department of Agriculture, the Extension Office for the University of Missouri, and then the EPA, and then also looking at other cities, what works for them as far as their codes go. I know I went kind of quick, but if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. So are there any council questions or deliberations on the bill? Okay, roll call, please.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Bill passes, 201858.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Section 19-401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the modification of a portion of West Ashley Street.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. This request came through Transportation and Traffic Commission by a citizen request, but basically it would add one parking space back to Ashley Street just west of Jefferson Street.
Any questions, council deliberation? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Bill passes, 201859.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Section 19-401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the modification of Norman Drive.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Another Transportation and Traffic request, requested by the public to remove parking on a portion of Norman Drive about 400 feet south of Industrial to the end of the roadway. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, deliberation? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. In the bill summary, in the background information, it says, "Staff did not observe any vehicles utilizing off-street parking at various times and noticed off-street parking is available." Was that first supposed to be no one using on-street parking?
I believe so.
Okay. And this is a dead-end street.
Correct.
Okay, so there's no through traffic. Trying to figure out what problem we're solving for $500.
Well, the, I know the bus facility is located there for public schools, and so there's a lot of large buses coming in and out. Removing the parking, we got no response that anybody wanted to keep it, but there is off-street parking available. So really, it's just an estimate of the signs to put up as around them.
But if there's no one parking there anyway, I guess I'm thinking, if no one's parking there anyway and there's not a whole lot of through traffic and people already have places to park in, I know $500 in the grand scheme of our, grand scheme of our, our annual budget is not a lot, but I'm thinking of that use in this case. So, all right, thank you very much.
Councilman Mahalovich.
I'd filled a few complaints with regard to mainly his FedEx employees blocking the buses on the other end, and they were very cordial about trying to solve the problem, but, and I believe they even created a new lot, the FedEx, for the employees to park in.
Yeah, and it's, we didn't observe anybody parking there, but when someone does, it's a problem. So I think FedEx tried to address it internally, but, you know, regulatory-wise, people could still park there. And then people coming in and out in the buses, trying to get around these, it's cul-de-sac street, basically a dead-end street. And so that was the reason for the request.
Councilman Hensley?
I may inquire of Councilman Mahalovich for a moment. So even though staff didn't see any, you've received complaints about, about the on-street parking being an issue?
Yes, in the past.
Okay.
And they, FedEx attempted to solve it by having their own parking lot, so their employees wouldn't have to park on the street. As I understood it, that was the issue with buses.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Nay.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Bill passes, 201860.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the deletion of Section 86 roundabout, sub-paragraph F.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Again, another Transportation and Traffic Commission item, but staff was requesting we just remove this section of the code. Basically, all it does is call out what intersections are roundabouts and to kind of know it when you see it if there's a roundabout there. So it's kind of cumbersome to remember to go update this code often, but it doesn't have any regulatory effect as far as we can tell.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
we just remove this section of the code. Basically, all it does is call out what intersections are roundabouts and to kind of know it when you see it if there's a roundabout there. So it's kind of cumbersome to remember to go update this code often, but it doesn't have any regulatory effect as far as we can tell.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Nay.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Bill passes, 201862.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, establishing rules for quorum and electronic participation for all city boards and commissions.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. Currently, the city allows boards and commissions to participate, for its members to participate by electronic means by individually granting particular boards and commissions the ability to have meetings through electronic means. There was a request from the Human Relations Commission to have this ability added to the Human Relations Commission. So at the administration committee level, the thought was instead of dealing with these on a piecemeal basis, it may be better to establish a, an overall, overall policy for all boards and commissions on how and when electronic participation would occur. This bill would allow for certain, sorry, for all boards and commissions of the city unless this power is withheld later in the ordinance to have meetings through electronic means, and that includes establishing a quorum with members who are attending through electronic means. There is a list of, a list of particular boards and commissions in the ordinance that this ability to establish quorums through electronic means is withheld. Those are some of our more public bodies or bodies that actually do permitting or other types of grants of permissions where it would not be appropriate to have those types of meetings conducted through electronic means. There is a, kind of a notice time to provide to the committee chair and to the city clerk if someone wishes to participate in these meetings through electronic means, to provide 48 hours' notice. That way, the, both the committee chair is prepared to handle that request, and also city staff has the ability, the time to address any logistical issues with having electronic participation at any given meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then there is also a substitute bill. So is there a motion to take up the substitute? So moved. All right, so we have the substitute bill. Are there any questions of council or deliberation? Councilman Fitzwater?
Just a comment, I really a question. I spoke against this at the committee. My concern is that it sets up a cumbersome process and it discourages folks from participating. I have a statewide association that I work with, so we have made concessions to allow folks to join in by conference call, but it's the only, because it's the only way we can get folks. But for a local group, I think it's going to discourage folks, and my comments are broad-based, it's not related to any one commission, but I think we need to encourage participation and folks being at the meetings and not having the ability not to participate. I think it's going to lead us in the wrong direction over time when folks realize they don't have to be in participation, so. I personally am against it. I'm going to vote against it because I just don't think it's the way for us to go. We want input. We want people to be at meetings and eyeball to eyeball and seeing body language and being able to discuss issues, I think, are how we move this city forward, so. I don't personally think it's a good policy for us.
Thank you. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I'll speak in, in support of the general idea. There are aspects of this that I wish were a little bit different, but I think we were, I think advice that has come along the way is that pretty much the construction we have now is the best form of attempting to do this. And, you know, this, this came out most recently of the Human Relations Commission where you have very passionate people seeking to serve to address issues that are important to them, and it just so happens that at this particular time, that commission has at least two members that are facing very serious health issues that make it difficult for them to attend meetings in person, though if they could stay home in bed where they're resting and recovering or just not able to get out of bed in the morning, they would, they would gladly do so. You know, these are not folks who are, who are, in my estimation anyway, not, you know, making the effort to be there. They, they wish, really with everything they had, that they could be there. And while two of these, while two of these folks are on the Human Relations Commission right now and which has made it difficult for them to achieve quorum in the past, you know, that sort of situation could, could hit any board or commission, unfortunately. Now, we, we hope it, we hope it wouldn't, but there's always the chance. And, you know, I think all the, I think what this does is it, it creates the allowance and it recognizes that, you know, anybody can get sick, anybody can have a life situation that makes it temporarily or long-term impossible for them to, to do something, but that we don't want to discourage their participation either. You know, they, we did carve out a number of boards and commissions where council believed that in-person participation was absolutely required, but on the whole, I'm, I'm supportive of the general idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, Councilwoman Ward?
I agree with the comments of Council, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hensley, and I just want to point out that our volunteers to these commissions, they're hardworking and they're very passionate, and I don't think they take their volunteer duties lightly. This type of attendance has been allowed through our cultural arts commission for perhaps now over a year, and it's been working effectively. You know, you may have someone that has a work commitment to, or is working out of, out of the area and calls in, and, and they are able to participate and vote, so it's working very efficiently for that commission and I think other commissions where you're not dealing with public hearings and building regulations and property votes and of that nature that, that this is, you know, should be allowed, and so those, so we can make it easier for those who are passionate and very busy in their lives to still be able to participate in our city.
Thank you. Any further deliberation or questions? Councilman Graham?
I mean, I can see both sides of, of the coin, but as I read this, we're not talking about all of the boards and commissions. We're talking about, what, four? Is that what it is?
It's, it's, it's more than that. It's, so currently, there's at least two boards and commissions that currently have electronic participation. Other committees, I believe the number is 22, 23, 24 separate boards and commissions in the cities. This has a list of...
So this would include these?
Ten committees that would not be able to do this.
Like planning and zoning and things like...
Yeah, so the balance would.
Right.
So just off the top of my head, USS Jefferson City Committee.
Right.
Culture Arts, EQC, Human Relations. Generally, the difference is between the ones that are listed as this is being not allowed and the ones that are, is that for the bodies that are not allowed, they have a component of people coming and making applications and requests from the city, and so there's a due process consideration of having the people that you are asking something of to be present and to hear the testimony in person that, that you're giving on your request. And so that's basically the difference between the committees that can't do it and then the committees that will allow it. But it is more than four. I don't have the exact number, but it, it's more than four. I'd say it's probably about a dozen, ten to a dozen.
Councilman Hussey?
Just, yes, yeah. And just for clarity's sake, the motion currently on the floor is to accept the substitute. Correct. We, so the vote would be to bring the substitute forward, not to vote yea or nay on the final bill. I guess, I, so I think in like real examples here, so Human Relations Commission is a nine-member commission. If this passes, that commission could have three people across the hall in person and two people on the phone who gave written notice 48 hours prior to it, and those five would constitute quorum.
Yes.
And those two people on the phone would be permitted to vote in that situation.
Yes.
They could have a meeting where there's six people in person across the hall, somebody finds out the night before they're going to be out of town, can they still call in and participate in the meeting?
Yes.
Can they vote?
Yes, they can vote.
The 48-hour notice is...
But it would not, but it would not count toward the quorum.
The 48-hour notice is really towards the quorum.
Yes.
Now, for the called-out commissions and all, since they're here tonight, Parks and Recreation Commission, some people here, it's called out to say it doesn't apply. Parks and Recreation Commission, they're a nine-member body, they have to have five people in the room physically there to generate quorum.
Yes.
They cannot achieve that through four in person and one person with 48-hour notice on the phone.
That's correct.
If they've got seven people in the room and one person on the phone, can that person on the phone vote?
So that, that particular procedure wouldn't be covered under this. That would be up to the bylaws of the committee itself, so in, so...
And that would hold true for planning and zoning, for all of these that are called out in here, Personnel Board, Transportation, that those specific commissions and boards would specify?
Yes.
How somebody on the phone could engage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further council questions or deliberation?
If I can add, primarily what staff is concerned of is compliance with the Sunshine Law, and state law in this realm is both young and very unclear, and so this takes a, an approach of trying to give staff and give the, give the boards and committees plenty of lead time to address these situations as they come up to make sure that not only are the, the boards and commissions being served and that, that there can be meaningful participation, but also that all the, all the requirements of Sunshine Law are being fulfilled to the best that we can under the current state of state law. State law's guidance on this isn't, isn't where I would like it to be, so we're, we're trying everything we can to make sure that we're crossing all those Ts and dotting all those Is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moulman. I believe we already have the motion and second for the substitute. I just didn't take a vote on that, correct? Okay, so at this time, we'll take, we will vote to accept the substitute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we'll take up the bill as substituted, 201862. Any further council discussion or deliberation on it? Okay, roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
No.
Graham.
Nay.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Nay.
Prather.
No.
Schreiber.
Five to five. Well, this is somewhat of a challenging and somewhat divisive, not divisive, that's not the right word, but it, it really, like Councilman Graham said, I do see both sides of it. I actually tend to agree with Councilman Fitzwater that being a local board, I'd like to see them in person as much as possible. I think, though, and I don't like to vote, vote on a motion or, or a bill based on, you know, specific people in those spots, but I, I will say, seeing kind of how this came about from the members of the Human Relations Commission that have faced significant health challenges, and it just so happened, I mean, you know, young, healthy people that suddenly are faced with very, very difficult health situations, but still really, really, really have this strong desire to serve and cannot physically get to the meetings, to see that happen has been also challenging. And like Councilwoman Ward said, it has worked for the Arts Commission, so I would tend to favor this bill while keeping in mind that if we find that there are challenges that I would expect that we would, you know, take it up again if we find that we're not having the desired result, that if it becomes, if we're finding issues with this. So I will vote yes on this bill, so I'll break the tie in favor of yes. But keeping in mind, like Counselor Moulman said, this is still, the realm is still somewhat young of, of the Sunshine Law in this area, and I do have significant, I still have some concerns, but I do think that what you've come up with, with the substitute, it will make it happen, and knowing that we've had it before in other, our other commission as, as an example. So I appreciate councils, both sides, it really is, there, there really are two very, very strong sides, and I think that's why we ended up with a five-five. And typically, in a situation like this, I would tend to vote no and say, let's take it back and reconsider, but I do think that for all those reasons stated, that I'll, I have voted in favor, so. We will, though, keep an eye on it if we could and find, if we find that there are challenges and that it's not working and, and that we are not having people show up. I mean, it really does need to be in these situations that are, are necessary, and we don't want it to become a habit where people are not attending, so for those reasons, we'll keep an eye on it. And if it needs to come back to this council, it certainly can, so, all right. Item 14, nothing on the informal. Item 15, resolutions. We've taken up item A. Resolution B is RS 201818.
A resolution authorizing the City of Jefferson to submit projects for the Transportation Alternatives Program.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Staff's in the middle of trying to put two grant applications together for this program. Basically, they're alternative, labeled alternative transportation project, basically sidewalk, greenway, those kind of things. But we developed what we think are two good applications for sidewalk projects, and we spoke with the Public Works and Planning Committee about it at this last meeting, got their input, and ranked them in the order here in the packet. But basically, just real quickly, the one project is on Missouri Boulevard continuation of sidewalk projects we've been doing over the last many years, and run from Beck Street up to Stadium and St. Mary's intersection, kind of fill in that last gap of the Missouri Boulevard. The other project that we ranked as, requested be ranked as number one was a sidewalk extension that went from Bel Air Drive on Main Street, followed Main Street over, dropped down to an industrial, and over to the Runge Center area. So it kind of connected that large neighborhood to some parks, shopping, bus routes, various things, and also eliminated, 179 is a barrier to people on foot in that area. So both good projects, both would be at or close to the maximum grant application request of $400,000. The match would come from the half-cent capital improvement sales tax under the sidewalk category, so it's a way to stretch those dollars a little further if we were to successful on either one. If you submit more than one grant application, the governing body has to rank them in order of preference.
Thank you. Any council questions or deliberation? And do we have a motion to take up Bill 2018, I'm sorry, Resolution 201818? Motion and second. Any further council discussion, deliberation, questions? Roll call, please.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Resolution passes. I hope we get the grant. RS 201819.
Resolution declaring the intent of the City of Jefferson, Missouri to reimburse certain capital expenditures for city park improvements from the proceeds of taxes, bonds, or lease purchase obligations and selecting professionals and authorizing preliminary actions relating to the offering for sale of such obligations.
Mr. Spalding?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're excited to bring this resolution before you. It's, it's been a long process for us as staff and the commission, but last Tuesday, October 9th, the commission unanimously voted to proceed with the reimbursement resolution of special obligation bonds sometime hopefully in early 2019. These bonds will be used to pay costs of our park improvements determined by the 2018 Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Master Plan, and, and through the process, the community needs assessment. Our Park Commission President is here that would like to say a few words about it, and then, then we have other members of the commission that's here as well, and, and we're here to answer any questions related to this project.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. I'm, good afternoon, not at all earlier. Brad Bates with the Parks Commission.
Hi, Stu Murphy. I am a resident of the 5th Ward, and I'm presently serving my second year in my first term on the Parks Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Lichel, serving my first term on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you.
Welcome.
And I'll start the quick presentation, and then these gentlemen can jump in if, if they so choose. It's an honor to be here. Thank you to Ken Hussey for his liaison work that he did over the last couple of years, and, and we welcome Mr. Kimna as well, and, and it's, we don't call it hazing any longer, it's more of an initiation process, and, and Ken recovered, you'll be fine. But it's an honor to be here in front of the Madam Mayor and the commission, and the council. The Parks and Recreation Commission had a desire a couple of years ago that we really didn't have a concrete master plan that would guide our department into the next 40 or 50 years. So in 2016, we reached out and did some research and engaged a firm that had a national reputation for coming into parks, looking at them, analyzing, telling what the assets were, the liabilities, and giving ideas to how to further develop them and really create a, an in-depth master plan. And I believe everyone has been emailed a copy of it a number of months ago, and it's, it's, anything you want to know about our parks is in this, this plan, so. We, one of the great things about it is when the team came in or the, the organization, the firm, they sent a team of volunteers, not volunteers, employees in to walk through every park we had and to see what natural resources were available to us, how the land laid, what it would be most apt to be used for, and also, on the, the negative side of it, they also looked at what we currently had as the offerings in some of these parks and kind of slapped our hands or gave us guidance as to what you really need to, to move towards. We were very excited to see the report. They went back and designed some charrettes and wonderful drawings, and then came back to Jefferson City again, had a number of open forums for people to come in, look at some of the plans, to make comments, and then they went back another time and cobbled as many good things to the community as possible, because parks are a driver for the well-being of a community, and they also are quasi-economic development, that people decide where they want to live at times and then find employment once they decide upon their place of habitat. I started to do some research on what tools would be available to us, should we go with the route of figuring out ways to provide more projects. One of the, actually, the number-one option that stood out had been utilized by most forward-thinking, progressive communities in the state of Missouri, and that was to bond a project, so that, in essence, you could borrow money in order to do your projects now and then make the payments back, similar to when you bought money for, or borrowed money for your home. I talked to a number of elected officials, a number of you guys, and also past elected officials. Former Mayor John Landwehr reminded me that bonding isn't new to Jefferson City, that we've bonded a number of projects in the past, including the 179 extension. Our sewer system was bonded, the parking garages were bonded. So it was very comforting to me and the commission to learn that there were options available that other communities utilized, and that Jefferson City had utilized very successfully as well. Once we were pretty much committed that that would be the best option for the Parks Commission, we sent it to our Budget Committee. And our Budget Committee, as with your Budget Committee, we sat down and tried to decide what exactly would we qualify for, what would be a safe amount for us to borrow that we can make the debt service, keeping in mind that it's city policy that we require that we have 10% in reserve of our total expenses. And in working with Piper Jeffrey, the city's financial council, we determined that parks could, in essence, handle a debt service payment that would be for a $15 million bond approval. And this was calculated using a 2% annual growth in the city's sales tax, and we utilized a 2% annual growth, because when you look back historically at the last 10 years of sales tax, we've had a 2% growth over the last 10 years annually. The payment to that, if we would go the 15 million, would have been 1.06 million a year. We inserted that in our budget that was presented to the council that the council approved. And while our calculations supported a $15 million in projects, our Parks Budget Committee was a little bit more conservative and felt that that would probably put us on the hook for more than we wanted to be, and we wanted to be a little more conservative, so we thought if we had a debt service payment of around $750,000, that that would allow us to utilize $11 million in projects. And in doing so, it would also double the amount that we would be able to keep in reserve. Remember, the city requires 10%, it'd allow us to keep 20% in reserves. So the Parks Budget Committee last month approved, moving forward with this unanimously. It was brought to the Parks Commission last Tuesday night, and Ken's last meeting, and it was approved unanimously from there as well. So myself and the Parks Commissioners stand before you and hope we can gain approval from you as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions or try to.
Thank you. Any questions of council? We could ask staff questions of Todd.
Depends if Brad knows them.
We'll take any questions at this time.
I just have a couple.
Sure.
One, and I know we've talked a lot about the budget, cash flow, you feel comfortable that this can be cash flowed. What is the timing of the funding mechanism, the tax, and the length of the bonding package? Is there an overlap that's going to have to be renewed at some point?
Yeah, we can answer that. It would be a 20-year term. Well, it could be a, however many years we wanted to, but we feel comfortable leaning towards the 20-year term to start in this project.
And the funding source?
It would be paid.
What's the timing of that?
When we would get the money to do our projects?
The dollars you receive, some of it comes by sales tax?
Yeah, this would be paid, the debt service would be paid for by our dedicated park sales tax.
And right now, I don't think there's a sunset.
There's no, yeah.
There's no sunset to that.
That's correct.
If that's what you're asking, Councilman.
Yes.
Okay. That's correct.
My second question is in regard to, I've gone through your book, and you talk about secondary funding methods, and I agree with you, things like user fees, fees to use boat launches, lodging, rental, liquor, excise taxes are not good ways to go about funding these kind of projects. My question is, there will be people in our community that will, you know, I'm assuming this has support, so there will be people that will be opposed to what happens. Do you have a communication strategy in place or a marketing strategy to talk to community, those in the community that are opposed to it, through, because council is going to get hit on, why did you spend $11 million on the parks when we've got bridges, we've got roads, those kind of things? So have you put that program together so that it's ready to roll out when the approval or the process starts?
Yes, we have been working along that, those measures, and we do have, I think, a pretty decent plan put together. And you're correct, Councilman, that there will be those that do ask the question of why, and as, to take you, it off the hook from you guys is, you aren't spending this money on the parks, it's the Parks Commission asking if we can do it. So I mean, you're giving us, of course, the responsibility to do so, but we're approaching you, realizing that the weight is on our shoulders to perform. And we're confident that we adequately can do so.
Councilman Prather.
Mr. Bates had mentioned something earlier about, with advice of their Finance Committee, I believe, you had scaled it back a little bit to $750,000 approximately, which equates, I'd say, 11-point-something million dollars.
Correct. Correct, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Mr. Moleman to kind of clarify, we have 15 million stated right now, but it's probably going to be closer to, it could be 11, it could be 12, no one really knows for sure, but this isn't the time we'll actually decide on it, I believe able to decide what the actual bonding will be at a late future date. Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, that's correct. So when we approached Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond council, we asked, what's the first step toward proceeding toward a decision on whether or not to issue these types of bonds? And they identified this resolution, known as reimbursement resolution, as the necessary step under tax regulations for tax-exempt bonds, to identify the possible total maximum bond issuance for this type of project. And the $15 million that's included in the resolution is based on that initial discussion of, here's the absolute maximum end of what the city could potentially issue for these types of parks, special obligation bonds, and so that's where the $15 million comes from. But that $15 million is non-binding. It's a identification of a maximum threshold. The decision on the exact amount that the, that the bonds would be at will come later in ordinance form with a ordinance that issues the bonds, it creates the financial instrument. And so, based on the funding, total debt service times interest, essentially, that will come up with the total amount that the bonds would be issued for. And so part of the beauty of a resolution like this, it's an initial step, and so there's going to be a process to get to the bonding decision, the ordinance, and in the ensuing time, things like interest rates, the city's credit score, some other market factors could change what that interest rate in the ultimate amount of bonds that could be issued on the day that the bonds get issued. We don't know exactly what that's going to be. So when I inquired the bond council, they said it's entirely appropriate to have a maximum anticipated upper threshold identified in this reimbursement resolution that is above what you think the bonds are going to be. So it provides some wiggle room, so there, so the various market forces don't, you know, fluctuate too much that you get out of here. Now, of course, this is $4 million worth of wiggle room, but I, Bond Council assured me that it was still entirely appropriate at this stage to approve the resolution at the $15 or $50 million value, knowing that when you go back and go through a fine-tooth, with a fine-tooth comb on the finances and you figure out your final debt service payment, it could be much lower than that. And so Bond Council had no issue with that number being at $15 million, based on the initial conversations of what it could be, but just know that this $15 million is a non-binding number at this time, and that the decision on what the bond amount will ultimately be will be in front of this council in an ordinance form. And we're thinking late winter, maybe even early spring, it's about a 90-day to 120-day process once we also get moving. And from a technical level as well, this resolution formally engages Piper Drafry as financial advisor and Gilmore and Bell as special, or as bond council on this deal, and it authorizes them, authorizes them to start work in earnest toward issuing the bond. And so this also, in addition to fulfilling some tax regulations, signals to those professionals that they can go ahead and get started on work on these, on these obligations, and that, that there will be, you know, considered in the future. It's no longer a speculative matter, but something concrete to start working on.
Councilman Hussey.
Just a couple of quick points. I think Councilman Fitzwater, when you were referencing their funding source to pay back, to make the debt service payment, you may have been initially thinking about the capital improvement, sales tax dollars, maybe that flow their way, that initially were included with the 10-year projections and staff and the commission recognized through advice of council and financial advice to say, you cannot depend on a funding source that's got an end date that requires renewal.
That's correct.
And so I think that's important to clarify, that your funding source here is not something that's got to be put before the voters again.
Correct.
And I guess I would just, one, I think this has been vetted by the commission, staff, worked through a lot of iterations of this, the master plan, and I believe the commission maybe has not finalized the project list for that $11 million, but intends to do so pretty soon, if I'm correct. I think community parks top of the list and been committed to.
That is, that is correct. And, and Chris had just reminded me that each project we will approve individually, it won't be a lump sum of projects. And you may ask the question, why have we not identified every single project? Well, you bid them out and you get costs back, and it may cause you to readjust what you're doing, but I will commit to the council this, that there are three of the main projects that we are committed to. One is Community Park, and Community Park exists in name only. I don't know that you could actually classify it as a park, and our firm that came in said, you don't even have restrooms or running water there. So it's, it's an eyesore that's going to be fixed. We will work on that. We are going to fix McClung Park. The pavilion at McClung is wonderful from a structural standpoint, but from an aesthetic standpoint, that you have a concrete floor with a big crack and it's been caulked, it's our number-one rented facility, even in the 40-year-old shape that it's in, and we really think that to bring it up to speed to a modern look is going to drastically improve the amount of rentals that we get and the income that comes from it. And then we have an amphitheater at Riverside Park that at one time, and many of you Councilmen, well, Council ladies will remember that, at one time, it was utilized all the time for band activities and concerts and Special Olympics and many different things, and it's, it's degenerated to the point now that we have to bring in generators in order to power things. And, and somebody asked me, but do you really think there's a need for an amphitheater in this community? And I said, absolutely. And the proprietor of Cork had an event there last October where she put up a big screen and showed Goosebumps, which is a Halloween-type movie in October. There's no lighting in the parking lot whatsoever, there's, it's not ADA compliant, and it's falling apart, and 700 people showed up to watch a movie under the stars. So we think that's going to be a really big draw for this community, and it's going to help express more artistic comment and options for this community. So those are three that we're definitely committed to. The Greenway Trails, of course, we're going to keep connecting neighborhoods, and then we're looking at an RV park across the river, because with the highway and the Katy Trail intersecting one another, there's a great opportunity there for, to bring more people to this community.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Councilman Schreiber.
I want to thank the commission and all the individuals that have been involved in bringing this forward to the council. And we know that parks are not only a key component in new growth in a community, but they're key in the revitalization of those older, more established neighborhoods. I've had any number of people that, that on the prison tours, in fact, just this last weekend, that asked me about that very issue of why isn't there a larger RV park or more, an RV park here that can accommodate individuals coming in from out of town? So I think we're on the right track, and I really want to thank you for the efforts put forth, Mr. Spaulding and the commission, and Councilman Hussey, and others as well. So I support this very strongly.
Thank you. Councilman Fitzwater.
Could I just ask a follow-up to Councilman Hussey? In the document, you've got a lot of community assessment data, and I know you always have to go through and call that down once it comes in, but I assume that final list will somewhat mirror what the community says they want out of the parks.
Oh, absolutely.
So the list that's in here is kind of a rough list of the projects that'll make the final cut.
Correct. And, and you can't commit to every single park.
Absolutely, and I understand that.
As, in the analysis, some parks have had much more attention given to them and much more amenities, so the touch that we have there will be minimal compared to some of the other parks that are really struggling. So it'll just be kind of a rising tide lifts all boats, but we anticipate that at all major parks, we're going to have some type of footprint increase for our projects.
Any further questions? Councilman Graham.
I just have a question for Mr. Spaulding, as relates to your reserve, reserve funding. What do you all have in your reserve funding?
I'd have to, it's very strong right now, I believe. We plan on ending this fiscal year with 3.5, right around that area, I believe, and we're required.
To have 10%?
10%, which is closer to about $1 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we see a dip, as we go in our 10-year projections, we do see a dip into our fund balance lower, obviously, but it never gets close, really, to that threshold, but it does then after about year seven, it starts to get back up there. So.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilman Mahalovich.
Worst-case scenario, ultimately, this council and we're responsible ultimately for the debt payment? Should, should, should we not keep up with the 2%? And, and the worst-case scenario, we're actually voting on this, is there's a small amount of risk, however much you might determine that to be, but we're ultimately responsible, are we not?
So the particular form of bond that is more than likely going to be what we are anticipating is called a special obligation bond. Special obligation bond, what that does, it essentially acts as an annual appropriation bond, and so it's the, it would be the responsibility of the commission and the city every single year to budget the debt service. And so if, for whatever reason, that debt service does not get budgeted, it does not operate as something that would accelerate and become due, because the people that buy the bonds know that it has to get, there has to be funds budgeted to pay for it, but if you don't pay that annual appropriation, it would wreck the city's credit rating. And so typically, cities do everything that they can to make sure that debt service is budgeted for, and so, so it's not like a general obligation bond, bond where the bondholders can come to the city, reach into the city coffers and pull out money. So the risk is really, if, if, if the payments were not made for whatever reason, the city's ability to borrow money would basically be destroyed. But, but it's not a risk that they could take the facilities away or force the city to levy additional tax. It's a different type of obligation than a general type of bond. So there is a ongoing responsibility to make sure that the debt service is paid for every single year, otherwise, your ability to address. every single year, otherwise, your ability to address other areas that could require bonding, borrowing has become severely hampered.
Thank you. Further comments, questions? Councilman Graham?
What effect would this have on us if we decide to float a bond for, let's say, for the, not a convention center, but if we do something towards a riverfront, and we decide to, to have to float a bond out there, how would that affect the city in going up with another bond?
Right. So, so generally, different types of project like these won't really affect the other one too much. What you want to make sure that you're doing is having a dedicated funding source identified on how each bond would get paid, and when those dedicated funding sources are separate from each other, the two issue, it really shouldn't affect each other in any type of meaningful way. The only way you'll ever really be affected is market and having people to purchase the bonds, but that's generally not a problem, getting, getting buyers for these types of bonds. They're, they're very good credit risk, and so people can buy these with confidence that they'll get their money back, you know, through the terms of the bond.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Okay. Appreciate the staff presentation and for our.
Thank you for your time.
Parks Commissioners being here. Also want to call out, we have Mr. Hank Strattman in the audience from the East Side Association as well. So, we will ask for a motion to take up 2018-19 resolution.
Second.
Is there any further council discussion, deliberation, questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Resolution passes. So, thank you to staff, Mr. Moleman and Mr. Spalding for all the work on it, and also for the Parks Commissioners. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics we have done this evening. Item 17, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? 19, new business, we have one item. October 22nd, next Monday night, there will be a city charter work session at 5:30, which will be an overview of the charter. Councilman Fitzwater, would you like to give us an update on what that will be?
Yeah, I just wanted to report, as we've indicated in the past, we thank the committee that did all the work and brought the ideas to us. As, as the council will remember, we put the bills on the informal calendar where they ended up not proceeding because there were concerns that other folks wanted to have input. I mean, this is our document, our living document that discusses our city and where we've been and where we're going, so there was just a feel that more members of council need to have input into that, and also the public. I mean, it was a nine-member committee, they had good input, and there were other folks that showed up for specific issues, but there was just a concern that we need to think this through before we make significant changes. So, we will be starting that process next Monday, and, you know, we will spend the time necessary, so Monday night will probably not be the only night, but we want to make sure that we think it through before we make significant recommendations to change, so.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. Item 19, any unfinished business, other than Laura Ward's birthday?
Happy birthday, Councilwoman Ward!
Happy birthday. It's still unfinished, so you still have the rest of the night, but what a way to spend your birthday night, so happy birthday.
Happy 21.
21? Again. I thought, I thought I heard Councilman Graham say 21.
She said her age.
I'd go with, I'd go with Councilman Graham.
Yeah, me too.
Happy birthday. All right, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Thank you, have a great night.